Good evening, welcome to the April 24th, I have to stop and think what month we're in, April 24th, Plimpton Board of Selectmen's meeting. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. All right. Tonight, the first thing on the agenda is a discussion with Mr. Dick Kobayashi from the Collins Center, who is going to talk to us about the town administrator position and how the Collins Center can help us fill that position.
Welcome to use the podium, Dick.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Dick Kobayashi.
Bill Plow, nice to meet you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Chairman.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Good, thanks.
And Dick, we do have the FinCom with us here tonight, basically to see your presentation.
If I could have one of your cards, I'll put it in my minutes.
Well, I'll tell you what, I've got five cards left.
Oh.
Are you?
Yeah.
No, I found a couple of the emergency cards. Thank you. I'll try to be very brief and then be ready to answer questions from the members of the board or the members of the Finance Committee, if that's appropriate. For the record, my name is Richard Kobayashi. I'm Senior Associate at the Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. The Collins Center was established by the Legislature in 2008 to give UMass Boston kind of a strategic arm to provide consulting services to municipal governments in the Commonwealth and to state agencies. We're housed at the university, but all of our work is on a fee-for-service basis. We operate as a consulting firm. All of the people we use as consultants are seasoned professionals. We don't use students, we don't use academics. They're all people who have worked in towns like this and in various specialties. I created and lead the executive recruitment practice area within the Collins Center. And since we started the practice in 2008, we have completed more than 50 executive recruitments. I do want to just mention one thing about nomenclature. Sometimes folks refer to us as a placement firm. We don't place anybody. If you're a placement firm, you're trying to place people you know or have found or whatever for a commission. We are what is called a retained recruiter. Our professional obligations run to your board, not to anybody else. We don't have favorites, we don't push particular candidates. We try to help the town develop an effective process that will result in having a good pool of candidates to choose from. I guess if we have a slogan, and we don't have an official slogan, it's that the biggest risk a Board of Selectmen or a City Council faces in choosing a leader is the risk of being faced with choosing the best person from a mediocre pool of candidates. And our main job is to make sure that you avoid that risk and that when we come to the end, there are three or four top-notch, very well-qualified candidates and the board can make some decisions largely based on fit with the board and fit with the community. That's something really the board needs to determine. We'll never know the community as well as the board members do. Onto the substance, there are really two parts to our work. One is, we can't do our job unless we understand our client and the client system. And we interview members of the Board of Selectmen one-on-one, and we interview other people in the community that are important to consult. But you have to tell us who they are, because we don't know going in. And the key questions really are, what are the key issues that the town is going to face in the next three to five years that absolutely, positively must be addressed? What kind of management style will work well in the Plimpton context? And thirdly, what kind of interpersonal and communication skills are required to be effective Most people in these jobs who have failures do not fail because of insufficient technical People fail more often because there's a communication or interpersonal breakdown. So those soft skills, soft skills that are in sync with what will work in Plimpton are very important. We talk and interview folks in the town government and community. We prepare a draft profile. I think I sent you a profile electronically. Right. I have some. Let's see. These are some samples, hard copy. We use a template, but the language is custom for each town. Once I draft or one of my colleagues drafts the language, we will send the text electronically to each member of the board for review, and we'll want individual feedback from that. Here's another one to send along. We can, once we get that feedback, we'll prepare a final draft and ask the board to vote on the language. And sometimes in these things, you have to go through a few drafts to get it right. But once we're done, we produce it in this kind of form, and the language and the shiny document become both an advertisement and a marketing document for the town and for the position. Our objective is to market the town and the job to people who aren't necessarily looking for a job at the present moment. We do standard advertising, we use our network. We find that the recruitment period needs to take about four weeks for the word to get out and for us to get stuff back. That's the first half. Now we have an applicant pool. The second part of the process is that we work with a screening committee that you appoint to decide who among the applicants will be invited for a preliminary interview, and we help the screening committee set up those interviews, and we give them some suggested questions that they might ask, trying to tie those into the profile, of course. And then, based on those interviews, the screening committee will make a decision on who to recommend to the board. The screening committee is a governmental body of the town. It's typically charged with making the kinds of recommendations I described. It's very important that the screening committee represent the values of the towns and the values of the board that will make the appointment. We would work directly with the Board of Selectmen in this whole process, from beginning to end, but under the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, the board as a whole cannot consider applications in executive session. Only a screening committee that contains not more than a majority, which in your case is one, member of the Board of Selectmen can do that in executive session. And if you can't maintain confidentiality at the preliminary stage of the process, then you really shrink the number of applicants who are willing to take the risk, because it'll all be reported and so on. So that's why we use that methodology. Screening committee recommendations are not in priority order. The screening committee's job is simple in the following, it's not simple, but it's simple in the following sense. All they have to do is decide which candidates the members of the board should interview in public session. They don't have to rank, they don't have to comment. Typically, a screening committee comes in at the end of their process and says, "We have four candidates to present, Mrs. A., Mr. B., Mrs. C., Mr. D., and then the ball's in your court." We will have done reference checks, and if the town wishes criminal background checks before the screening committee recommends its finalists, so that business is all cleared out of the way before you interview. The process typically takes 120 days, plus or minus. I'll state the obvious, summer is our enemy. I want to stop right there, and if there are any questions or discussions, happy to address them.
How big is the normally, the pool, the screening pool that you want to see put together?
Somewhere between 10. In every recruitment, you get applications from folks that meet the qualifications that are specified in the profile and people who come nowhere near to me. There's always some chaff in the pool. But we like to see between 10 and 15 qualified candidates. And our judgment is, if there's a judgment call about whether somebody meets the quals or should be, their resume should be given to the screening committee, our bias is always to make the decision based on inclusion, not exclusion. The other thing is that the screening committee has an opportunity to see any and all of the applications, including the ones we might not have put in a packet. And we provide the screening committee with a comprehensive list of all applicants and a short summary of their backgrounds. When we meet, I, or a colleague, has the resumes that are not in the packet, in my briefcase, and if somebody says, "Gee, why wasn't Dick Kobayashi's resume in there? I'd kind of like to see it," I can pull it, I'll just pull it out of my bag and pass it around, and people will say something that they want to discuss it some more, and that's okay. It's fine, we don't.
How many people actually on the screening committee would you recommend?
In most communities, the number is between five and seven. More than seven, it becomes logistically difficult to find common meeting dates. And this is the kind of a committee where each decision, each meeting is a decision and moving forward, decision and moving forward. You really can't catch up by reading the minutes.
Yeah.
So a screening committee typically works relatively intensively for a four or five week period, and then it's done. And it really doesn't have any work to do until we have applications, which is usually around week seven, eight, or nine in the process, depending on how the sequence goes. So in the front end, our work is fairly intensively with the Board of Selectmen, and at the latter half, it's pretty intensive with the screening committee.
Hi. Once you've compiled the brochure, to whom do you distribute it?
Well, we, the method that we use that has worked well is that we place ads in the two major publications.
MMA?
MMA and the International City Management Association. It's a relatively small profession, and folks who are sort of in the job market or in that profession tend to follow those two publications. And we post the profile on our website and have a link to it in the ad, so anybody who's interested goes, click. So almost all of the distribution is electronic.
When you're dealing with a small town that probably doesn't have an enormous salary, are you still expecting the same number of applicants?
Sure. But they'll come from a different, this is a wonderful job for somebody who's been an assistant, who wants a first job. Sometimes there are people, you know, we're dealing with, there's no such thing as a local pool anymore, because, you know, anybody, anywhere in the world can read the MMA and the ICMA, and you really don't know where people are coming from. And I just want to, you know, on sharing with the screening committee, if you can spare me 30 seconds for a story, I was working in Great Barrington, and there was a candidate who was a senior staffer in Mayor Bloomberg's office in New York City, and I didn't include her in the booklet. I said, you know, "Eight million people, 7,000 people in Great Barrington, the scale doesn't make any sense." But I put her on the table, and the people on the screening committee said, "Well, what about this woman, Jennifer? You know, would like to see her." I said, "Well, sure, but, you know, let me, why?" She said, "Well, Dick, didn't you know that Great Barrington considers itself a suburb of Manhattan?" I said, "Oh, I had absolutely no idea." She was appointed the town manager.
We had a very steep learning curve.
And she's happy there, and they're happy with her, and, you know, it's like, you don't always know, you have to know what you don't know, you know? And so we leave that, we leave kind of room there. We have worked in, the smallest town we have worked in is probably the town of Irving, 1,800 people out there on Route 2, and kind of just past Orange. Same process, and they seem satisfied with the outcome, and they had adequate applicants. I mean, you're, I mean, part of the good news for Plimpton is that you're embedded in a region that's got, you know, somewhere between 500,000 and a million people within a 45-minute commuting distance. And while the town appears isolated to some, it's not really isolated. So the labor pool is reasonable. And in our dialogue with the members of the Board of Selectmen, we need to get a sense of familiarity about, you know, to what extent somebody needs to come out of the municipal sector to be effective here, or how deep their experience in the municipal sector has to be. Several years ago, we did a job for Northfield, Massachusetts, up on the Vermont border, on the Connecticut River, 3,000, 3,000 people. And they had a candidate who was, had been a school committee member in his community in Norwell for, you know, six or nine years, and had been on the Finance Committee, and had run a series of retail, family-owned retail stores, and wanted a career change. And the Board of Selectmen there felt that he was the best fit for what they needed. And he did, he apparently did an exemplary job over a few years, and I'm told that he recently was hired by the town of Acushnet. So there were people, you know, their, a high concern of theirs was ordinary business operations and customer service, and he had that professional retail customer service orientation. And so you don't always know what's right, and it's a process.
Do you make any recommendations about the length of the first contract?
No, we try to, we try to leave the matters of contract between the board and the finalist on the theory that it's the first really important decision that they're going to make together. And, you know, if you have trouble with the contract, you probably, there's a sign of trouble downstream. And, you know, there needs to be a bona fide back and forth, and, you know, it helps if we're as clear as we can be about what the general terms are that the town is thinking about when we vote, when the board votes the profile. I mean, we don't want our profile, it sets unrealistic salary expectations or contract expectations. On the other hand, we don't want to, we don't want to go bottom fishing either, because then that results in a, you know, a not very good pool. And since most people who are candidates will come from the public sector world, there's a lot of transparency about what folks are making, where they are right now. Yes, ma'am.
So should the Board of Selectmen decide to proceed with consultant, the funding for this is actually on the special town meeting warrant, so it would become available right after town meeting. Are you suggesting that we really need to wait till after the summer to begin the process of advertising and?
Well, you know, I don't know what your internal business is. We need a contract with the town.
Sure, I know.
Or at least a vote to contract with us, you know, and then we can proceed in good faith. We don't need an executed contract, what we need.
But if you had one at, say, June 1st, you would start right then and there?
Yeah, we'd try to, we'd try to finish the profile by the end of June, because meeting with people and probably the board's summer schedule is less frequent than the rest of the year. And then we'd use the bulk of the summer for recruitment. And if that were, you know, that were in train, that were a normal expectation, we could, we could even, we could even tentatively schedule meetings before your vote, so that when you pull the trigger, we're ready to go. And, you know, if you don't pull the trigger, you know, we wasted a few hours in scheduling, but that doesn't really matter.
How many people do you have that get included? I mean, you don't do it all yourself, so how does that work?
I have two colleagues, Mary I. Cardy, who's worked with me on this since 2010. She's an expert HR person, and, you know, has got, you know, two and a half decades anyway of municipal work. And the other person I work with is Susan Adler, who retired a year or so ago as the HR Director for the town of Wellesley. And both of these people are very seasoned senior people. And we always put, at least two of us on every project, and that way, 90% of the time, we can meet the board's or the screening committee's meeting schedule, that we're not the reason for the lag or for a lag. And then, you know, then we have a third person kind of on call. So those are the three people who work in this area.
This is just, I'm a little unclear about the purpose of the brochure, if most or all of your recruiting is done online. We're a very frugal town, so the cost of printing a glossy, I don't understand what the purpose of that is.
To attract candidates by telling Plimpton's story and being clear about what the Board of Selectmen are looking for in a candidate. It's not the glossiness, it's the words.
But the people are going to really read that online. I guess my question is, where does the brochure, where does that go, other than online?
It goes online.
Just online, okay.
You know, and people like to have a couple dozen copies floating around Town Hall in hard copy, and, you know, a big part of the readership of a brochure, interestingly enough, are citizens, officials, and employees within the town. It's a story about where the town's going, whether that's electronic or hard copy. The conversion of ordinary text to a glossy brochure costs about $200. It's not a high expense item. And, you know, and sometimes at a request of a town, we just use text. But we like to, you know, just in the same way that a real estate agent works, we like to put the best face on the opportunity. And the system has worked very well, but if it's the town's preference just to go with text, we can do that.
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Out of all the towns that you've worked with, have you been able to fill the positions through your services so that when the, your contract is up, the town has a town administrator? Or whatever position that you're helping to fill?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we will stick with the town until the job is done. There have been, I just want to be fully responsive to your questions. There have been a few instances where, in a sense collaboratively, we and the board have decided that it is better to re-advertise than make an appointment. We've had situations where there were qualified finalists, the board made an offer, the person that they liked most went in a different direction. And the board didn't feel comfortable reaching back into the existing pool. And of course, you know, by that time, three, four months have gone by, and we, like, "Let's take a month break and refresh the pool and re-advertise." It's not that much work. And it's amazing, you know, over a four-month period, different people are available on the market. So we've done that a few times, and it's always paid off. And in general, we haven't, we haven't made a supplemental charge for that.
My concern was that if we did all this work and there was nobody that the screening committee felt they wanted to bring forward, or, you know, they felt that, like as you stated, it was a mediocre pool, and they really didn't want to pursue any of the candidates.
Well, then we can call timeout right then and there, and, you know, kind of huddle and say, "Look, what is the, let's assess, what's the reason we don't have a good pool? Did we not suggest in the profile an adequate enough salary to draw the right kind of folks? Did we just hit the market at the wrong time? You know, August's not a good month to advertise, everybody's at the beach. You know, let's analyze that, and then we'll go out and take another shot at it. But with, basically, the payment structure for us is, you know, we send you an invoice for about 60% of the fee when we for about 60% of the, the fee when we, when we have an initial pool. And then you don't pay us 40% until the job is done. So you're always way ahead of us on that. So our, so our incentive really is to do this once well, but we're dealing with real humans and sometimes you need to do things twice, but, but not too often.
All right. Well, my fear is that this position would be a training ground, and I really would not want to head in that direction, where I would like you, so that we're working with you, so that we have an adequate salary, so that we'll have somebody here for a while, and that we're not looking at a turnover in this position on a regular basis.
Yeah. Well, all of that has to do with how you set the terms in your original vote on, because what you're really doing is you're sending a signal to potential applicants about, about what you want and, and what kind of a commitment you, you want. And, you know, I understand, I understand what you mean. There is a qualification which is worth speaking about. In a, and this, this holds true for police chiefs and, and school superintendents and all kinds of other, if you're working for a relatively small organization and you're relatively youthful, which everybody looks youthful to me, you know, you need, and professional growth is really important to you, then you grow by moving to another employer. And that's just, that's just the way of the world. And sometimes that works out fine because, you know, over a five-year period, somebody can make a very significant contribution. And, and people don't always know what they want when they take a job. They change. Different people get elected, the town changes. You know, but I understand, I understand what your preference is.
The smaller towns that you worked with before Irving and Northfield, did they hire full-time, three-quarter time, part-time?
Full-time.
Full-time, okay.
We, we haven't, we haven't done any recruitments for, for, for part-time folks.
Do you also look at the support structure around the, the position? In other words, we, we don't have a support structure basic. So is that part of your critique?
We're trying to, well, it's not so much a critique. We, we need to describe accurately, you know, that, you know, the job, you know, involves, you know, being your own support person, really, as well as doing, doing, doing a lot of other things. One of the things that we, we would like to talk to you about if, if you make the decision to hire us, is we'd like to get a good understanding of what the existing job description is. And my understanding of if, that the current, the way the current position is structured, it operates largely under, under formal and informal delegation of authority from the Board of Selectmen. And in similar situations, we've found it useful to take a look at that in the profile development process. And here's, here's the question that, that we as your consultants have to, have to think about. My phone or Mrs. I. Carty's phone is going to ring, and the question is going to be, what, Dick, what's the job really like? What, what are the powers and duties of the, of the exec, of, of the town administrator? Is it, is it sort of administrative assistance mostly to the Board of Selectmen? Or does the position have delegated powers to appoint, to discipline, to buy stuff, to, you know, all of those, all of those institutional and organizational processes? It's, it's good if we get, we can get some clarity on, on that. I mean, the other way to do it is people, people establish confidence in themselves by the town and by the Board, and then they, then they grow into a job. And that can work, and it has worked, but it's not as attractive as being more specific in the profile. If you want to attract someone who makes this their profession, we need to think about, I mean, that's your call, those are your powers. We need, we need to think about that with you as we develop the profile. And it's your call.
The screening committee, is that internal people within the town government, or do you look for people from outside in the community, or is there not a template?
There's a general template. The first thing is the appointing authority, the Board of Selectmen, has to have confidence in the screening committee. Because you're only going to see the people that they recommend. You're not going to see the great bulk of applications because of the way this is structured. So they really, you really have to feel that they're functioning as your surrogate. Now, what happens in, in a lot of towns is there's, there's a member of the current Board of Selectmen. Sometimes it's a member of a former Board of Selectmen who's kind of got a sense of the pulse. Some communities have made it a practice to put somebody like the moderator, who's got, who's elected town-wide, but has a different perspective on the committee. It's very frequent that either the Chair or a designee of the Finance Committee is on the screening committee. I don't know what the school setup is here. Are you part of a regional district?
Yes.
Sometimes it's very useful for the screening committee to have a school superintendent or a designee, because so much of the town budget is tied up with the schools. And frankly, the people on the school superintendency side have been through these kinds of processes before as candidates. And they, they bring a different, different angle of view. Those are the, those are the types of people. Question comes up sometimes about whether or not there should be a town employee on, on the committee. Different towns deal with that in very different ways. Some towns say to the department heads, we'll put one of you on, you guys decide who you want to have represent you, but make sure that they know that they're not representing themselves, they're representing the management cadre. But that's a lot of pressure on, on an employee to maintain the confidentiality. Some people are comfortable with that and other people are, are not. In other communities, people are very uncomfortable with, with, with having an employee on, on the committee. It depends on how the town, the values of the town and what seems to work. You can, you can, we can get going on the profile, on the profile before you have fully formulated a screening committee. Because they don't have any work to do until week seven, week, week seven or eight. But you can, you can kind of mull around those parameters. But the most important thing is they're the Board's surrogate. And also, having the kind of people that I described involved gives the process and the final person selected a broader base of support in, in the community.
How many people do you interview when you start off just talking to us?
At the beginning?
Yeah.
Each member of the Board and people that you tell us we should talk to because they have insights. And usually, we, usually we like to meet with the department heads as a group. Usually, in a typical town, 50, 60% of the, of the department heads live in town or grew up in the town. And when we talk to them, you know, either I or my colleagues always say, look, you know the town, you're an employee, what kind of leadership will work here? But you're also citizens of the town, or you used to be, or your parents were. What is, from your citizen point of view, what does the town need? And we usually find that that's very helpful to us in understanding a town. And it's usually a good idea if the management cadre in the town gets to lay eyes on the consultant, makes them feel more comfortable with the process and that this is not something that is being done to them. We're trying to help the town as a whole. I can answer what might be an unanswered question. How much does this cost? So it might, it's going to come up later anyway. The, the draft scope that we provided the Board members is for our standard fee of $14,000 for all of the work that I described. That number does not include the university's out-of-pocket costs. Travel, advertisement, police background checks, miscellaneous other things. The biggest cost item is, is the cost of background checks, which we'll carry out if the, if the town requests them. Now, if there are three finalists and the background checks cost about $400 apiece, that's $1,200. If there's four finalists, it's $1,600. So that's, that's a big, that's a big variable. If, if somebody's a candidate here and we just checked them out six months before, well, maybe we could skip that, you know, would ask. But that's, that's, that's really, that's really the biggest variable. And the reason for the, and the background checks are verification of educational credentials, credit check, and criminal background check, all three. And really, the reason why we do that before candidates are announced is you don't want to embarrass the candidates, the town, or the process. You know, not everybody has a perfect credit history. People have had, you know, but you don't want to be surprised and have the whole process look sloppy at the end. And if there are real substantive problems, you surely want to, want to know before these people are sitting here in a public session deciding, and then there's a sudden last-minute surprise and everybody, everybody's pretty uncomfortable. So those, those seem to be worthwhile. Most, most of our clients choose that option, but it's really up, up to the Board.
So can I ask in a, in a search that's an average search, what does the total come to with those additional? And I realize you can't predict travel, but of all.
Well, travel's not, you know, we're not so far away. Well, no, let's just say $2,500.
For the extra, including the, the background checks?
Well, you asked, you asked for typical. So that would be, you know, let's say 50, you know, $1,200 plus $1,200 is $2,400. Three background checks and $1,200 in expenses. The advertisement is about somewhere between six, between six and eight. So, so that, that's a reasonable approximation.
Somewhere in the $17,000 to $18,000 range.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean.
Now, do you do any recruiting, or do you just post and then people come to you or to us?
Good question. We do posting in the two major publications. And, and we have, since we've been doing this for quite a few years, we have a very wide network of people that we know in the profession, particularly in Massachusetts. And we have a lot of people who've shown interest to us or written to us in the past year or two, said, you know, I'm ready to move from where I am. If you see something that's up my alley, let me know. So we have that kind of network. And, you know, we have, we have the ability to reach out to those kind of folks and say, look, you may have, haven't been following any ads, but given where you live and what you've told, what you, what you chatted with us about at the MMA trade show or in a phone call or when you were a candidate some other place, Plimpton is something that maybe you want to take a close look at.
No, that's great.
And a lot of people, you know, kind of, oh gee, I'm glad you called me, I haven't been following that stuff, but yeah.
Somebody that you've had gone through the process with in another community that maybe wasn't a great fit there would be a good fit here, and I'm glad to hear that you.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, we, we do that with, with great regularity. I mean, 50 searches, eight years, you wind up, you wind up knowing a lot of people just by the nature of, of what you do. And because, and the other thing is that because we have relationships with a significant number of people in the profession, they're pretty comfortable calling us up. You know, I read the brochure on, on Plimpton, what's really going on there. And our reputation is, we try to be, we're very straight with the clients, and we're very straight with the candidates. Here's what they're looking for, you know? Is that really all they can pay? Yeah, that's all they can pay. You know, don't, don't, you know, you just like, you know, it's, you know, you know, some towns want to send a signal that, you know, the limit is stretchy. We'll, we'll talk about that when we, when we do the profile. You know, but we try to be very honest and direct with candidates. We don't, we don't hustle candidates into a process where we kind of know they have no chance. A question comes up a lot, which is, how do you treat internal candidates? Or candidates from within the boundaries of the community? And the answer is, we treat them like everybody else. We afford them the same degree of confidentiality. Their, their resumes are shared with the screening committee on the same basis that everybody else's are. Just like any candidate, they can decide they don't want confidentiality and talk about it publicly, or they can keep their cards close to the vest. That's any candidate's choice.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Anything?
No, I thank you very much. Thank you very much for inviting us.
Thank you.
If, if you go forward with the Collins Center and the Collins Center process, you'll get a first-rate job, and we'll stick with you till you're satisfied.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it. Susan?
I just wanted to check that, does, does the special town meeting warrant close now?
Is the warrant closed?
Special.
No.
When is it going to close?
Let's close it tonight. Tonight?
Tonight?
Yeah.
So can you get me tomorrow? Could you email me the last draft or whatever? But tomorrow, would you be able to email me your final draft?
Yeah, I will. The Council may make some, because I've still got one article, it's not flushed out yet. But I have it, there's 11 articles on it, you may be familiar with it. No, no new money articles, that's all the same, so.
And the annual as well, whatever they said. I don't know if anything's changed, just whatever your last.
No money articles have changed that, that.
I just want the final version.
Yeah.
If anything's changed.
Yeah, I should be able to have both of them to you tomorrow, depending on what the Board does tonight. You're talking about a few articles on the ATM and the, I just, I would have, I would have sent the special out tonight, but I just got, at 5:00, I got from Town Council, I got some changes, so.
I'm sure.
Just word changes. Again, no money, so from a income standpoint, you're dealing with the same kind of, the same kind of cash both ways.
The warrant's going to the printer in a few days, that's what I have to be.
Yeah, well, I wanted to, yeah.
We kind of need the final wording. The other question I had is, as it gets, it's going to be re-formatted. The other question I had is, as it gets, it's gonna be re-formatted. Normally, when I do the final formatting of the warrant, if there's little punctuation errors and stuff, I'll correct those. I never change any wording, ever, because I figure it's your warrant. But if it's a spelling error or something, I was wondering if we have your blessing to make non-substantive editorial corrections?
You're my blessing. That's fine.
We don't normally change them, but when we move, you know, it's getting moved over.
Thank you for doing that.
So it's okay to make those minor?
Thank you for coming. There was the possibility of you coming back later. Are you still doing that, or do you, do you, do you need to do that?
Have you changed anything?
You know, Susan?
Are you gonna be here for a little bit?
Yeah, probably.
Probably.
I think we'll probably need to, because we're gonna recommend less than...
Okay, so we're, we do need to come back.
Okay, that's fine. We'll be here for a little while.
One, one quick question here. There's a question coming up tonight. We're doing a bylaw change. It's a county patrol office bylaw change, and the bylaws 13 pages long. They're gonna discuss whether they want to include it in the warrant or not. The warrant, as it stands, is 13 pages long, so in terms of your mail-in, I just wanted you to know that. My recommendation to them is, no, it's on the website, the town clerk has it, the article reads that language, and it just puts us in compliance with Mass. General Law. So, I don't really...
But we legally have to put it in?
No, we do not.
You may end up with a 26-page one.
Okay, so you'll know that...
We, we got advice from town council.
Okay. And you'll know that at the end of the night?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Thanks.
Next 10 minutes.
Okay, thanks for arranging that, that was informative.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is, in fact, the warrant. So Dale, do you have?
Do you need a copy of this one? I should have it here, but I mean, the finish.
Is this the annual we're talking about first? Yes.
Yeah, I didn't, it hasn't really changed that much. There were some town council questions that I think you probably need to address. She doesn't recommend the signed bylaws regarding political signs, that article, she says we're gonna run into, we may run into trouble with the Attorney General, or it's very easily challenged in court because of the First Amendment free speech rights. So that would be a call for, for the board. And everything else was in order. Article 31, the exemption, property tax exemption for, I mean, personal property tax exemption, that does, it's not required to be on the, on the warrant. I mean, you can leave it on there if you want, as a sort of a feeler for how the populace feels about that. But it doesn't, it has to be done by a ballot, a ballot article.
Oh, it has to be a ballot question?
I believe it does, yeah.
Is it too late?
So we can't have it now anyways?
Oh, it's too late, yeah.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you could, I mean, again, if you want to leave, or you could just vote to take it off the warrant. Open the warrant up and take it out, it's just less space in there, but...
Are there gonna be any elections coming up? You know, regular government elections, where we could put it on a ballot?
No.
No, okay. Two years, a year and a half?
Does it give, or the state?
All right, so it wouldn't be...
But I mean, again, if you leave it in there, then you, you know, you've got town meetings approval, I mean, or at least town meetings, you know, blessing to do it whenever you decide to do it, even if you have to wait until next year.
I'd say we take it out, though.
I think it's gonna be confusing.
Yeah. If you can't go forward without a ballot, then all we're doing is getting a sample of town meeting, and I don't know that that makes any difference.
Okay, so you want to vote to drop that article?
Yes, I agree. Yes.
Okay, that is...
So, motion to remove the Article 31, the property tax exemption from the warrant, pending its inclusion in a future ballot.
Sick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And the next question is, do you want to let the two zoning articles be, the bylaw changes from the bylaw review committee that she was questioning on the political sign law? Again, that would require rewriting the bylaws differently than they are rewritten. I know they're doing it in general, in...
So, help me understand, we've got the sign, the bylaw committee came forward with the sign language, correct?
Correct. Well, there was sign language in it, language, oh, the signs, in it, and they rewrote it.
They rewrote it, right.
They changed it.
And legal is saying that...
And the comment from town council, her, her comment, I don't have her comment. Her comment was that, in terms of the signed bylaw, there has been, there's been case law, and there's been some issue about limiting wholesale, limiting of, of the amount of time or the size of signs that you can put up under the First Amendment Constitution, free speech. So she's, she says that she's, doesn't really recommend that because, you know, again, it could be, it may get challenged by the Attorney General when the law's submitted, or it may get challenged in court by somebody who wants to run for office and do a 16-by-16 foot sign.
But she didn't outright reject it, she just thought that...
No, that was her recommendation, was it probably should go, but...
I have two feelings on this. One is, if she didn't outright reject it, I don't know why we can't put it in, but I also don't want to undermine the bylaw committee that just got started.
I mean, you know, you could leave it in using her recommendations and have the bylaw committee revisit it next year, and, you know, maybe they can make a change then if they want, but, you know, what, whatever.
Seems like it's kind of been rushed, though.
Yeah.
Where there hasn't been the normal process. We've had the timeline here, they want, they picked out a couple of bylaws that were really good ones to start with, but we haven't really vetted them properly and done the process. And now Alana's saying there might be an issue where, you know, maybe they should revisit it and work it out and come forward with something next year, rather than put something on now that may be problematic.
Well, it's what we have, it's just, it's changed, they've changed it slightly.
Right, right.
I mean, it's what we have. And a lot of towns have it, it's not just us. A lot of towns have it. And then what happens is, it's okay until, of course, someone challenges it. If it gets through, and I, I have found, I don't know if you have, but I've found in the past that the Attorney General will let stuff go through that is blatantly unconstitutional, maybe with a statement that says, you know, this is really kind of unconstitutional, but we'll approve it based on what you sent us. And, I mean, I had that happen before, not here, but, I mean, I had that happen before.
And she's saying, though, that even if we don't change it, that the existing verbiage we have for the sign law is probably unconstitutional?
Probably problematic.
Yes, it's, I just...
So, I mean, I would allow the change this year, and then, like I said, you know, you can, if you want to put it to council later and say, how should we change this to make it, you know, pass muster? But they're very sensitive, the courts are very sensitive about limiting the size and the duration of when you can put political signs up. It's particularly political signs, is what it is.
So what does she say exactly?
All right, it says, "In my opinion, both the existing zoning bylaw, Section 6.1.4 and the proposed amendment to it raise significant constitutional issues under the First Amendment to the Constitution. Because while regulation of signage is allowed to protect health, safety, and welfare concerns, any such regulation must be content neutral, and if challenged, the regulation will be subject to strict, strict scrutiny." Sorry. And she names case law. The current zoning bylaw, 6.1.4, provides a durational limit for political signs of not more than 30 days before or five days after an event, and requires that the size of the sign be limited as provided for the underlying district, but imposes no durational limits on other allowed signage to the underlying, in the underlying districts. The Supreme Court in Reed versus Gilbert held that any stricter regulation imposed on one type of signage, based on, on its content, in this case, political signs versus other allowed signage, than other types of signage cannot withstand a challenge. During the durational limits that are proposed to be applied would apply, since the durational limits that are proposed to be applied would apply only to political signs and not other allowed signage, the durational limits would be subject to challenge. In addition, if all signs are limited to six square feet, that might be upheld if challenged, but courts might determine that reasonable expression must be allowed and may rule that six square feet is insufficient." It does go on quite a bit longer.
Is the six square feet what we have now?
I think that's larger, isn't it? It's six square feet in some districts. This, this all started because there was, in the past election, there was a sign that...
A large sign.
Yeah, and, I don't know, I, I feel that, that maybe we need to do something, but maybe, as you said, we're kind of rushing this and...
Maybe it's all signs, because when somebody has their roof redone, they put any temporary sign really should not be up more than 30 days.
You can't differentiate between one sign or another.
And I don't think we should.
Well, I agree.
I mean, all of those temporary signs should not be, and a lot of them are up until they blow over.
Right. So though we're supportive of the bylaw review committee, maybe this was just rushed a little, and they didn't get town councils' advice.
They haven't seen this, have they?
I don't know if, if...
Town council, the bylaw review committee, I don't know if I, I don't think, I haven't...
I don't think they saw that.
So we ought to send it to them.
Certainly not in a timely fashion.
Okay, I'm, I'm...
I mean, I would, you know, I mean, I would, again, I would, in deference to the amount of work they did to put this together, and they're not lawyers, you can understand that, so I'd probably leave it in. And then, and then if you have to address it in the future, address it. Or if, for some reason, you absolutely shouldn't put it in, then you could pass it over to the town meeting, but at least it's there.
And I would argue otherwise, because we have no elections coming up, so it's, it's kind of moot for a year, and that gives them enough time to actually iron out the wrinkles.
So can we take it up?
And expand the... Yeah. Look at all signs.
The scope, exactly, all signs.
Right. I mean, again, you could vet it through, you know, you could just ask curbs, say, what, what passes legal muster as far as, in your opinion, and then they could, and then they could do it.
Right.
But again, I'm not sure that, I mean, just given the sensitivities, I'm not sure that you really want to toss it.
I, I would toss it, I think.
Well, you're kind of sending a message to the...
No, I, I would say to the bylaw committee that, you know, given the issue and we need more time, and it's not like this is just our town, it's...
Right, and, and, you know, we went to their meetings for a while, and they were looking for some low-hanging fruit, and this is, you know, maybe a little bit of a poison fruit, and we don't want to grab it right now.
I think, I think that's the way.
And that was not clear to them, now we have new information, so...
It's something that could slow downtown meeting to a crawl if somebody really, you know, we had a problem with town signs, and I'd rather not create a, a problem for ourselves unless we got a solution.
And I wouldn't think that they would, I mean, they've been so meticulous, I wouldn't think they would want to put forth a product that's not gonna stand, you know?
And again, it's not like there's another election in, in four months that we're gonna have to deal with.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah, let's, so, yes, motion to withdraw Article 29, which is the signed bylaw.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And, and that's pretty much it. I mean, 31's not required, 29, question with that, which can go. It's pretty much the, the legal stuff on the...
Just second term.
You got a question?
I have a question about the dog bylaw. Alana got back to us based on the revisions that I had done and Frank had reviewed, and she gave quite a lot of, she sort of narrowed it down, actually. We put a lot of details in it, and she took a lot of it out, saying, you know, based on Mass. General Law, you can do this, and then ended it without the, the description, a lot of descriptions after that. I, the way she worded it, Dale had asked if we could post it to, in the five official places without having the whole thing printed, and I'm happy to do that. But I think that the initial wording, the way she worded it, it's, it says as follows, and it's 11 pages. So I don't know if I, do I have permission to speak to her?
I followed up with her in an email this afternoon, same thing, and she said, it's essentially a policy decision, but as long as it mentions that there's a copy in the town clerk's office, and it's posted on the website, it, it passes muster. It's not, you know, people can't access it.
Okay, you can't give me that information then, because I...
This was late, I mean, I was on with her late, I mean, I don't know, it was probably quarter or five by the time I was...
Okay, so she said that's okay?
Yeah, she said we can do it.
Can you just help me with the wording?
I got the wording. It's on the, it's on the, where is it? Which article is it?
I thought you said it was 25, but you weren't...
Yeah, I think it is 25. Hang on, because the new language is here. Yeah, to see if the town will vote to amend municipal bylaw, Article 21, Rules and Regulations Relative to the Control of Dogs in the Town of Plimpton, to delete same and replace it with a revised article, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk and posted on the town website.
Oh, good.
To conform with the requirements of MGL Chapter 40, Sections 137 to 174, or take any other action. So that's the language. You have her revised copy.
I do.
And so you can...
Yep.
Put that together.
I just didn't get that piece.
And it'll be in your office, and then...
Okay.
Doesn't have to actually go get posted with, I mean, with the warrant, as long as people can get a copy, and the website, which, whatever, when you...
Yeah, I already started that whole draft process.
Yeah, okay.
It's on the website already.
Well, I shouldn't say that. It's up to the board, I mean, they can include the 11 pages that they want or not.
She also suggested putting it at the library.
So, Library, Village Cafe, Post Office, done it here.
Usual places, and, and on the internet.
I already did a memo.
What's gonna go on the actual warrant? We're not gonna put in 11 pages, so...
What he just read.
That was the article.
Is that the paragraph?
That was it, it's the first paragraph.
Just, okay.
Yeah, and that the revisions will be posted.
Just see if the town will vote.
Now, you had talked about, this really only affects penalties and fees, right?
Nope, she, it's penalties, fees...
Definitions.
Some definitions, and, and also hearing procedures.
Okay, so it's bigger than...
If they're considered nuisance dogs, then the hearing procedures were more specific for how the hearing would happen and who, who's responsible for conducting which pieces of it.
But these are state changes, these are, these are not changes that we're making.
No, these are state changes. So I can include, like I said, that, you know, a synopsis of what most of the changes are and why, that, you know, just a quick, just a quick little blurb when I do it on postings.
I would like that, too. I think, one, dogs are always, you know, kind of a...
They are, I know, that's why I want to make sure that this is done correctly. And I don't want it to not pass with the Attorney General, so I wanted to make sure if we didn't post it in the warrant, it wasn't gonna fly, so it should have been done in 2013.
So if we could put the article on the web in its entirety with a synopsis leading into it?
Yes.
And then what would we do? Have handouts at town meeting? Separate from the warrant?
I mean, I have it in news and announcements, and when I do that, anybody who has subscribed to it gets it. I can have copies, but I don't think we need to have a lot.
No, just...
And when I explain it, if somebody asks questions, if they even do, if it's not clear enough with the description in the first paragraph, I mean, it just says we're coinciding with Mass. General Laws.
Okay.
I'll be prepared, but I think it's pretty, I think we're getting the word out.
Great.
What do you need from us, a vote of some kind, or?
I was all...
I, I only was asking because I needed to know if I had permission to speak with Alana, again, about that.
And do you still need to?
No.
Okay.
Because he has the information. But I do, I do have another question that's Alana-related. The warrant article for the special about alternative posting methods for notices of the open meeting law, notice of meeting postings, I just wanted to know if I could have permission for Alana to give me the right wording, and this is for a warrant article on the special?
Just gonna say, I believe she sent that along this afternoon as well.
There was changes late afternoon.
What article is that in the warrant? I forget which one it was, on the special. See if the town will vote to designate the municipal website?
Yeah, that one.
As the alternative method of posting meeting notices, I believe she actually fleshed that out a little bit more, but I have the language consistent with... with the provisions of nine forty CMR twenty-nine, final three, or take any other action. Is that the language that, that's the language we had, did she change it from that?
That's the one I sent to you.
Okay, I believe part of her email that she sent today, she may have made a change in that as well.
Okay, good.
I'll let you know, I'll check on it, and I'll let you know-
I didn't have all that information, I just hadn't heard anything.
If not, they can tell you whether you can talk to her or not.
I don't think I have to, if you have the information.
Yeah, if she provided it to you, then I think we should be okay.
I just didn't get that till late to me, so I was worried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tara.
So do we need to make a motion that we're not going to print the dog bylaw in its entirety, or by just vote?
It's a policy thing, I don't know.
Yeah, she says it's policy.
If at all in agreement, I mean, obviously, if one of you didn't agree, then you probably would vote on it just to make it formal beyond that, so, so we're, the only motions I have is we're dropping twenty-nine and thirty-one, and-
And we already dropped the dental insurance article-
Mm-hmm.
Previously.
Yeah, I believe we pulled that off the pair.
We did, it was in the minutes.
We did by vote, I just wanted to make sure it was removed.
Article twenty-five, to provide dental benefits?
Okay, yeah, because that's what happened there, was twenty-five moved up to rules and regulations for control of dogs when we pulled out that, that was the adjustment. And we'll only have now a total of thirty, twenty-nine, thirty? Thirty-three? Thirty-three. So we'll have thirty-one articles on the warrant.
Okay, and I did have a committee member ask me about, they read our agenda and asked why we're, excuse me, removing the liability article, and the reason is because it's going on to the ballot, and maybe we want to ask the newspaper to put a little blurb in what this means to the town, you know, why we want the liability article on the ballot now.
Do you want to take my email, I can get, like, the exact words that you wanted on the article?
Sure.
Perfect.
That'd be fine. And actually, probably the warrant article would say it, is that sufficient for-
The-
The previous, the one, the one we removed, yeah.
Oh, I don't have a copy of that.
Will you make sure we get copies of all this carton?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I fleshed out, actually, I have copies, and when we discussed the special, I made copies for all of you on that.
But they're all electronic, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
I don't want to tighten again.
I don't need that copies.
Yes, so afterwards, you give me your email address, I'll make sure that you have the wording from the article that we've removed, because it's going on the ballot, so we're still wanting to protect our volunteers, it's just a different fashion.
This is the special, as it stands, and I only have one, well, if you're ready to go to your special, we can vote on all of these at the same time. I have one question, and it's essentially a question for John, on including the, you know, the article for the, you know, the exchange server, and how do you want to word that, John? How general do you want to be about what IT upgrades, I mean, do you want to use that, or?
Number six, as blank right now.
Article six.
Yeah, I would make it general.
So it's the transfer of, raise inappropriate, or whatever, for general IT upgrades.
You probably need to put a little more specific information.
Primarily email server?
Server, software, and-
Comma, primarily email, software, and that server.
The PCs themselves, the workstations.
Okay, server, workstations.
You people are right with it?
Yes, and certainly you can speak to it at town meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. That was basically the only question on there, what changed, Article one is now, is now fleshed out with language, that's the, it's essentially a town clerk's article, but it's really not, I mean, it's your article, because the spectrum for the software that we need is pretty broad.
Where is this?
Article one on the special.
Article one.
So we need, we need to vote on these, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, you haven't voted on anything on the warrant, I mean, you can read them all, and then you can blanket vote the whole thing if you want.
I'll go down one by one, I- Article one, is this, the wording is, this has been approved by Alana, or?
Actually, no, this hasn't gone up, the final, she approved what we had given her, what I gave her up to last Thursday, that wasn't on there, and there's a couple of others. I made, she did actually make some changes in a couple of the other articles that I've incorporated into this draft, but she'll get, she'll get all of these finals at the same time.
So whatever we vote tonight is subject to change, to be tweaked?
Yeah, she may, yeah, subject to town council tweaking that.
All right, let's just go through them quickly. Article one, see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate, and or transfer available funds with some of five thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars, I'm not going to read them all.
Yeah.
So, all in favor of this article?
Aye.
Aye, so that's three out. Article two is nine thousand one hundred for the codification of, and Susan's going to take care of typos, so we don't-
I'll change that one, I just saw it.
Now, is it proper for us to put this necessary, this explanation, or would that be better to town meeting when we talk about it? Because we normally put explanations on the warrant, do we? I mean, the article is the article.
We can pull it, and you can put informational stuff in an article, but we can also pull it, I mean-
A lot of towns do put synopsis, it seems to me it helps, but the problem is, who writes them? You know, do we write every one? We don't want to be in the position of that.
Well, and that's it, I mean, why would you do one and then not the rest, and it kind of, you know, obviously promotes the position that you want this to pass.
Yeah, I can go either way on this, I'm-
Up to you, I mean, I can, we can, you can certainly take it out.
Well, I just would hate for this to come to the point where there is a synopsis for every article, and the warrant becomes so big.
Many towns, what they do is they just do the bare bones article, and then opposite, or underneath, not on the warrant, as a separate, as a separate sheet, there's a synopsis of every article for what it's for, and a lot of times that comes with a finance committee book, or whatever, whatever happens, but it's, a lot of times it's very handy, it saves moderator a lot of time asking questions.
Oh, I agree, it is handy.
It does, but we don't have the support structure to do this, you know, the way some of these towns do it.
Well, I mean, you could look at doing that in future, you know, but-
All right, so then, do we want to just leave it at the first paragraph?
We already signed.
Do you want that?
Yes, I want that.
Do you want the copy of the contract? It's on Bree's desk, do you have it?
Motion to approach the bench.
Come on in.
As long as you're on camera. We, we signed it, so it's in the secretary's office.
Oh, okay, very good. Danny's here also, so I thought I'd just come in and fall on the sword. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Glad to be back, John.
Same also, and thanks for all your help.
So Bree will get it to you tomorrow.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd say we drop it then, if we're gonna-
I just hate for us to set a precedent.
Yep, that's fine.
Well, you're going to have to explain, just, I'm sure-
Right, we're going to explain it at town meeting anyway.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah, absolutely.
We're removing that paragraph, all in favor of the article as it stands?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number three, ten thousand contractual obligations for sick leave buyback.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to decide who's speaking to these things, or?
Yeah, we probably should.
So the-
There's the bill accounts.
I would say Tara's number one and two.
Okay.
Okay, so one and two is Tara.
And I'll be glad to speak behind them if, you know-
Okay, so, so Tara to move them?
Yeah, but also to talk about-
And, yes.
Yeah, and then if there's more explanation or more support needed, I'd be glad to talk to them.
Okay, number three, that basically came from Barbara, but-
Yeah, I can speak to it, I just need to be, understand what the scope of it is. I mean, I know what it's for, but I just need to-
Yep.
-look fast.
Okay, police detail account, these are usual things, I think, no, this is new, isn't it?
So, on number three then, we need, but, okay, Christine, you're going to move it then, no?
Yes, I'll move it, and-
Number four, I can move or you can move?
Okay.
And then Barbara will speak to it, I'll move it.
Okay, that is, this is new, but-
Do you want me to change these to board from police department?
Yeah, really, the police department isn't setting this up, it's the board of selectmen, isn't it?
Okay, so we'll change it to BL, so it's okay.
Okay, so all in favor of number four?
Aye.
Aye. Number five, OPEB, all in favor?
Now, was that, that was finance committee that recommended this, right?
Yep.
Okay, aye.
And should we ask finance committee to speak to it?
Oh, yeah.
So, Susan or Nate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, six is, I was in a group, wait a minute. This was actually from, at Dale's suggestion, number six.
Yeah, we did it last year as well, and it's, it's handy when a pipe breaks or something, we seem to have at least a couple of those a year.
Okay, so I'll move that, that's mine. All in favor of it?
Aye.
Aye. Seven, twenty thousand dollars for the town administrator search. All in favor of it?
Aye.
Yeah, I'll move that, if you want.
Okay, John's going to move that one.
Exchange service, and it's written, I'll move that.
Okay, and that's board of selectmen also.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article nine, do we, is this going forward, are we passing over this, the pilot?
Well, the pilot's still going back and forth, the final iterations of it are still going back and forth before you actually get to negotiate it, this just, town meeting just authorizes you to negotiate and sign, assuming you see something that works for you.
Seems all right to me.
I just remember, was it last year's town meeting that there was a pilot article on there that wasn't, yes, there was some negativity?
We had three pilot articles, and I believe, and one of them was rejected, and I'm not sure why, but one of them, I don't remember exactly what happened, but one of them was rejected, and the other, there was either two or three.
Okay.
One passed and one didn't, and I, I don't know what the reasoning was, in any event, this was the only ones in front of us.
Well, I think it's because we hadn't, we, maybe we didn't have a, I don't know, I don't remember why it was rejected, but is this, this isn't getting the horse in front of the cart, right?
This?
Yeah.
This place is built and online, or almost online now, they're, I mean, we have a, we have a, it doesn't affect us, other than it's going to get assessed for its real value, which, in lieu of the pilot, I mean, is sky high the first, you know, first, first year, so what they're trying to do is, and they dropped the ball on this, we didn't, they just kept passing, you know, the pilot back and forth, and it may get passed back and forth for a while, but it gets assessed at whatever, if we don't-
So they've already gone through planning, everything else-
Oh, yeah, that's all done.
The thing is almost built, it's just whether or not we want to do a pilot, which is the payment in lieu of taxes-
Yeah.
-or require them to pay their personal property taxes loaded up front.
We know how much money we're going to take in from this yet, or is that part of the negotiations?
It's part of the negotia, well, it will be part of the negotiations, because I think they're recommending a lesser amount than we've done in the past with other ones, but there may be some mitigating.
So even if we approve this, if the negotiations don't work to our favor, we can always turn it down?
Yeah, right, exactly.
And then they'll just pay tax on the assessment.
Yeah, right, exactly, this just authorizes you to negotiate and to sign it if you're going to come to an agreement with them.
Okay.
Why haven't we, and we haven't negotiated because we don't have the authority yet to do that? Is that why we haven't?
That, and they haven't really presented us with, I mean, our attorney, this has been going back and forth now for a while, especially as of late, but our attorney hasn't, you know, he sent it to me, I sent it to them, they sent it to their lawyers, it comes back, I bounce it back to Rick, and, and then he makes some recommendations on it, and we, and at that point, he will at least, when he's done, or when everything's done, he'll get a full, you know, something that you can negotiate, that your attorney has agreed is proper.
Well, it seems like we're making it easy for him, if they don't have their ducks in a row, and they're not really coming to us, if they put more taxes the first year, oh, well, you know, I don't understand why we would do this.
Well, they're requesting a pilot now.
Who's requesting it?
The people who have built the field.
Okay, so they are requesting this?
Yes.
Well, then why has it taken so long to get it squared away, where it's going back and forth, and it doesn't seem to be like in the final phases with-
Well, it's, it's pretty final, but I mean-
But we couldn't even negotiate it without this, anyway.
Okay.
Right, and they've been through the planning board, they obviously have a cycle plan review, that's all done, everything's done, and when it came time, who their representative was, I don't know what it was, he dropped the ball, this was like last fall, this thing was in, and I requested a pilot from him last fall, and then I had to actually come back again, and he gave me one, and I sent it to our attorney, to council, council sent it back to me, I sent it to them, I never heard back, so I finally, this spring, I said, hey, you know what, you're running up against the wire here, you better send that thing back, so we can get it going and, and get you on the warrant for a pilot, oh, please do, we want to have a pilot, so-
Okay, okay.
That's where they stand now, and, you know, and you can't-
Is there a drop dead date, Dale, that if they don't do anything, they just will, we won't have a pilot?
I don't know if there's that, well, there's a drop dead date in terms of when they actually get taxed, you know, and that's-
So if they get taxed, can we then sign a pilot agreement after?
Sure. Yeah, you can sign it after the first year, it would just probably, you know-
I don't see why we wouldn't do this.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if they, if they insist on getting it taxed at full value, then, and they'll have to pay that the first year, then you'll have a nineteen-year pilot, and the remaining nineteen years will get divided one nineteenth, you know, that's what pilots do, they basically take what you would pay and divide it over the period of the pilot, so.
Okay, so, do you want me to move this?
Would you?
No.
Me, that you have the most experience with these.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, that's from us, but again, that would be Tara, I think, speaking to it. All in favor?
Aye, and this is the language that we're going to get clarified?
Yeah, I believe so, I may have that language already, but it's just the same thing.
So just a question, on one and two, even though Tara's going to speak to it, we still have to move, in this one, we still have to move the motion, because it's board of selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll move one and two?
Okay, I can move ten.
Okay, great.
Then Tara can talk to it.
Okay.
Ten, we have to, no, eleven, what a great idea.
Want to vote it? You wanna vote it?
Well, that's, the problem was, it was appropriated for last fiscal year, and the DOE, or whoever, has to come down and sponsor that, and helps with it, and takes the stuff, and all of that kind of stuff, they can't make it before the end of this fiscal year, so it'll be after July. So, it's just a transfer of money from the line item from last year to put it again in this fiscal year so we could actually do it.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Did we go down the previous one?
Yeah, three out.
Yeah.
You get, Jim just moved this?
Yeah, I would think Jim would move that.
Okay, so, motion to close the special town warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we don't have to sign this tonight, right?
No.
But we do have to sign the annual tonight.
No, I don't think we do.
Technically, no. I mean, if you vote, that's the way it is, that's the way you're gonna get it to sign, and you can sign, you can sign the official copy of it anytime. She needs it within two days to send it to the printer. And there's a longer period of time before it has to actually get posted, you know, outside, and posted up on the website.
We could both decide it, so then just come in.
But you can, in other words, you can, it'll, yeah, sometime within the next several days.
Does the signature page have to go to the printer?
No.
Okay, I thought it went, I thought it was...
I mean, it could, it could, you know, but it doesn't, 'cause I'm not sure, I don't think she uses PDFs for, you know...
Okay, then we don't have to.
You know, when we met with Barbara and Colleen, and we talked about that dental benefits, they said that the money was already in group health, but we're talking about a lot more money. So, I just wonder if group health should be reduced if we're not doing the dental benefits.
Right, but it was only reduced by the three thousand dollars.
But that was three thousand dollars a month.
Well, I think what they meant, though, was that the coverage in Mayflower, in some plans, already has a piece of dental included.
Okay.
But it's not something that we're taking out.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay?
Perfect.
We're done with the warrant, come now?
You're all gonna, you're all voted, I mean, to sign the warrant, and when the final copy is ready, which it will be tomorrow, whenever, unless, again, unless Alana, she's been very good about getting stuff right back, so, unless she makes any changes. She's not gonna make, she's seen everything, so she's not gonna make any changes that are gonna be, you know, just the work and stuff.
Can I see the annual? We could even just do a signature page, come in this week and sign it.
Mm-hmm.
So, that way it can't go to the, the printer, with our signatures on it. It's pretty much set up that way now.
Okay, so, motion to sign the warrant with the understanding that language will be cleaned up and...
Well, yeah, and the articles that you voted to drop will move, so all of this will...
Right, right.
You know, it will change.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Sure. And none of this is gonna change.
And should we do the same thing for the special then?
No, the only votes are gonna be on the drop.
That's not really, you know, the final.
Well, outside of the article for the software and IT, it's pretty much the same.
Okay.
But are you signing, are you signing this thinking this is what's gonna...
Yeah, that we could send it to, we could give it to Susan.
Well, when I drop those other two articles, everything is gonna change.
Yeah, but if we didn't, if we left this as a signature page, and even if there was something that didn't come down, it didn't match up perfectly.
You're gonna have about this much white space on a sheet of paper.
Why don't we just vote that we'll sign it, okay, when we get a final copy, we can come in individually and sign it.
Perfect.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, Bree's not here, so, do you know anything about the annual town report?
No.
She's gotten all the reports?
No, I'm assuming she, she hasn't mentioned to me that she's having any problem with it, so...
Okay, we all saw the pictures, and we're all happy with...
Super cute.
Yes, okay.
Pictures, I...
The...
The one with all the animals?
The animals?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was really cute.
All right, the next, the next thing on the agenda was recording and playback of meetings. I was flipping around the other night, there was a meeting on public access, which was from maybe last, end of the summer, early fall, when we were into, when the Public Safety Building Committee was interviewing architects.
Yeah.
And it didn't say anywhere on it that this was an old meeting, I mean, I assume it said at the beginning...
Had no gain.
Not running with it constantly, so if you just flipped it on, you may be thinking that this is going on last week. I just, it's just troublesome to me that there are really old meetings on there that don't have a...
But they were all introduced by a signature page.
Yes, but if you flip out in the middle, as I did, and you're sitting there, you're watching, and you're seeing the committee interviewing an architect...
But it's no different than having a page on the web that you flip onto, I mean...
Except on the web, you always go back and see where it started, and...
Which you can with the video.
No, this was on television.
Oh, on television, I'm sorry. I never look at television, so...
So, the only thing, I was wondering if we can ask Area 58 to make sure that the school committee meeting, it runs through the whole video.
It should do that.
And maybe we can just either take off the old things, or have the date stamp run through the whole video.
All right.
Just on the bottom, just, you know, they're the kind of things that people see and might get a little head up about if they think it's going on now.
I think that's a great idea.
So, I will ask Bree to, ask Area 58 to do that.
Okay.
So, is the annual town meeting is still running from last year, or...
It, it had been, but I haven't seen it recently.
But claim to fame?
So, I asked them to put a timestamp on all the videos.
That's a great idea, and what, whose meeting it is.
Yeah. It's on the school committee, so I don't see why they can't do it for others.
They probably can.
So, that's both of those issues, huh?
Pretty much. I think that, that maybe next year, you're still gonna wanna get some more committees taking their meetings, and there's still some resistance.
I talked to the assessors, Liddy, you saw, they said, basically, I asked Tara to do a quick survey of her town clerks, 'cause she has the, and none of them take their assessors meeting.
Okay, so that's, that works for that one, then.
And Board of Health feels the same way, so they're elected, we'll just go after our own.
Yep, okay, good. I thought I would have a really good report on the land purchase, it's only sort of good, which is that we gave them a check, we gave them the plan, it's all agreed upon, and we're just waiting for an amended...
Right away?
No, not the right away, that's...
Deasement?
Nope, has nothing to do with that. It's something that we could, a partial removal of the lane.
Oh, okay.
That's it. So, as soon as, as soon as the attorney gets that from the bank, then she will take it and record everything, and that should happen maybe tomorrow, maybe by the end of this week.
That is good news, of course.
Yeah, that's really good news, that's great news.
Good.
That's it. I thought I had the signed warrant list. I don't.
We'll do it next week.
It was basically, you know, the electric bills, nothing unusual.
If somebody coming in tomorrow for gas, which we may be able to get actually a production of, we pay for natural gas, which is a fair amount of money every month, I don't know.
I bet it is, yeah.
Well, it's mostly dentit, but then that's the, that's the big building. But we may be able to save some, some good money on that, going forward, which would be great.
So, Dale, do you have some other things to report on?
No, I've been slaving to this thing all week long.
I have a few things.
Okay.
This meeting would think on, thank you, this...
That's, they wanna come back in, yes.
Oh, they're coming back in now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, in the interim, first of all, kudos to the fire department for the work they did on Buttonwood Drive.
Yes.
Because I got a lot of feedback from people saying they really responded quickly, and that house would've been gone if it'd been ten minutes later. So, kudos to them. Also, kudos to the open space and volunteers for the opening day at the park, it was a nice time. They had a little group down there playing. I don't know if you made it down, but...
I did not. I did watch some video of the music.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see, some of these I'll skip. I did have a member of the community wants to get on the Conservation Commission, and I talked to Linda Liddy, and we're gonna see if we can make that happen, so... Barbara sent out a benefits worksheet, I don't know if you've looked at it?
I don't actually...
So, it has each of the...
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
And I think in the future, one of the things we wanna do is take a look at that, and make sure that the benefits, you know, as we go across by contract, fire, police...
Oh, that, so that was the list of contracts, I didn't move over to the right.
Yeah, so, just make sure that we've got some fairness and equality there, that was the purpose of it, so as we go forward, we can just look at it.
Good idea.
It is a good idea.
I happened to read a article on pension liabilities for the state of Massachusetts, which was dire. I mean, it just talked about how more than likely, if you look out twenty years or so, people who think they're gonna retire with the pension are probably gonna get half of what they thought. So, financially, we're gonna have to watch, watch that.
We should just all be self-employed and never retire.
That's what I'm looking at.
Work forever.
That's it.
The, the Godrails that Jim is having put in, he came to us under a, and I think it's around two hundred thousand, they're still resisting doing the rusted, and I'd like to talk to Tom Coulter about that, just to see if we can get a little push.
Sure, good idea.
Last one, zoning. The zoning agent can't go out and, you know, pick, I wanna talk to that person, 'cause I think there's a zoning problem. He has to, we have to direct him to do that. So, I would like to see us, if not tonight, another meeting, talk about assigning him to go out and look at all commercial, all residential areas that have commercial things going on, to sort of clean up what we can. Also, these contractor yards, what's a contractor yard and what's not? And again, he can't do it, it would be taken as, you know, him. So, I think what we should do is just assign him to say, make up a list of those ones that you think have a problem, and let us at least approach them, and then assign them. Then he's got the power to go and investigate them, because we have areas that, some, like, some are where there's zone residential, and there's clearly a commercial operation going on, and I don't think we should just ignore it, I think we have to address it. But when we do it, we have to do all the ones that we can see in town that are obvious. If they're not obvious, then just gotta do it.
Maybe it should be bigger, and we should put a list together of, you know, all issues that we're aware of, and just start plugging away at it. You know, in generalizations, like what you just said, or, you know, if there's another category that we need to look at, you know, just so that we have an idea of what we want him to address, and we can just start assigning him.
Yeah, I really wanna empower him, so that it's not him doing it on his own authority, it's the Board of Selectmen directing him to go and do this. And then, all he's doing is coming back and telling us, these are the ones that look like there may be issues, and then we have to make a decision whether to go forward.
Right.
Do we talk to legal, do we talk to the person, the resident, whatever.
So, do you, how do you want to do this?
Ideally, I would like to have a vote of the board to say, these are the areas we would like you to go forward on, and come back to us with a list of those things that you think are not correct within the zoning bylaws that we have.
Okay, and so, when you say areas, you mean, go check out all?
Yeah, and I'd rather give them a, just overall, I think we should say, okay, my own personal opinion is, I hear lots of, I'm sure you do, around the contractor yards. Is it a contractor yard, what is a contractor yard? If, in fact, there's own bylaws saying that the people can do this in the way it's being run, then, you know, in the future, we might wanna change bylaws, but it's legal. Right now, there seems to be a question of whether or not it's legal, and I think I'd like to see that cleaned up, one way or the other. Also, the same where there's some industries that are really expanded onto residential property. I think that's, we just shouldn't allow that, that's not fair to the neighbors. You buy into a residential area, it ought to stay residential.
So, I guess I'm trying to ask, are you suggesting that we pick out, you know, go over to 106 and do this, or go over to 106...
No, no, no.
Or work more general?
More general, that we give him the authority to go and look at the tunnels.
We are actually just going to come in and get you, so, anytime. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Why don't we start with contractors yards?
Okay, so, can we vote that we have the zoning agent make a list of those that might fall into the category of contractors yards, and whether or not those are legal the way they're being operated?
Yeah, so we should check out the ones that are, that we know are operating, make sure that they're doing it properly, and any that are questionable.
Right.
I think that's a great start.
Yeah, so, wanna make it, was that a motion?
I think that was a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay, and are you going to speak with him and get this started?
Yeah, I will.
Good, thank you.
I would put that, you know, a letter, sign it, and give it to him, just so he's covered, because pushback could happen.
Yeah, we'll give him the cover he needs to...
So, I did find the list of warrants that I signed this week, really quickly, Belmont Springs, ten dollars, Columbia Gas, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, Verizon, a hundred and seventy-nine dollars total, Eversource, thirteen, fourteen, around fifteen hundred total, and Production One, ninety-six dollars. Do you wanna do correspondence while we're waiting for them to come in?
Liddy from John and Mary S. Walker, sixteen Prospect Road, saying that they're wanting, they're notifying us that they intend to convert the property from chapter sixty-one B. Keep going, or you wanna wait?
We can switch now, so... Hi.
We need Nate.
He's coming, he's, he's gonna...
Well, go ahead, do another one.
This is Fung and Karen Floyd. Six, Dennis, sixth grade class would like to request setting up a bake sale and put them out sale during the town meeting on Western Main Seventeen. This is here handled by town moderator, Brian Wick.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay.
Okay. Oh, thanks. Okay, fine. Good luck.
Mr. Sides?
Hi there. So, we just had a couple of items pertaining to the fire budget that we had requested more information. I believe I copied the board on my request to the chief. There were some items that when we were reviewing the fire budget, appeared to be duplicates with some of the items that were being presented for warrant articles. So, we asked the chief for clarification on those particular line items, in addition to a couple of other line items, that the request seemed to be out of line with past history, including this current fiscal year. So, assuming the board read the requests that went to the chief, we received a reply back from Captain Law on the, on the four items that we had requested information on, and long story short, there are a couple of lines that we feel can be adjusted in the budget, and we just wanted to make you aware of that. So, specifically, we had a question about the equipment line, now currently, they are budgeted for sixteen, sixteen thousand dollars, which is the combination of fire and EMS equipment for this year, current year, plus three thousand dollars budgeted for equipment repairs. Currently, they're projected to spend, assuming everything remains at the current rate, which of course, you can't predict, they're expected to spend about eighty-six hundred dollars. They had requested twenty-four thousand, which would be a thirty-three percent increase. We asked them for justification, there wasn't any, so we are recommending proceeding with our recommendation of sixteen thousand dollars for that particular line, so that, in essence, reduces their budget request for that particular line by eleven thousand dollars.
Didn't, you said there was no verbiage at all?
I can read you the verbiage. It says, as far as the equipment, I think you have a typo for twenty-four thousand dollars, which we verified that it's not a typo, and I have it here, you'd like to see it. But I'm not sure if other changes were made, we are, oh, I'm sorry. It says, we have multiple pieces of equipment that need to be replaced. This includes fire-rated ladders, we can't use standard ladders. The equipment line also includes repairs.
So, if they stay the way they're projected to, we're actually doubling that budget for them? 'Cause they were projected to spend about eight thousand dollars this year, with budgeting at sixteen.
And that, the expenses this year includes repairs, and includes repairs to, or their radio expenses, which was the next item that we had a question about, because you'll recall, there's a warrant article for roughly thirty-five hundred dollars. Current expenditures for this fiscal year is minimal, and again, I'd already included that in the dollar amount Lisa just quoted to you. Current costs for this year really have been next to nothing for that. And their explanation for requesting $7,000 was that a single portable radio to be FCC compliant for fire, should it break, is approximately $3,000 to $4,000. We've been lucky that we have spare older portable radios to replace the ones that get broken. A truck radio, should one break, is about $5,000 to $7,000 to replace, plus the cost to replace batteries and chargers if needed. It was the feeling of the board that we shouldn't be budgeting for anticipatory breaking, and if something dramatic happens to one of the radios, that they can approach us for reserve fund transfer, like they did last year when their pump failed and they needed to get that replaced. So we are removing that $7,000 from their budget request as well.
The warrant article, though, for the...
The warrant article for the pagers will remain, because we agree that that's a safety issue, and we want, we want certainly the town to be covered. So we're going to leave that in as, as presented.
Okay.
And the other, the other piece of the puzzle was, the turnout gear was, was also listed twice, and...
It took $5,000.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I apologize. So in, in, in the budget request, there was an amount for uniforms, which, you know, polo shirts and whatever pants and whatnot. And then there was also a line in there for turnout gear. So there was turnout gear both in the budget request, and then there's the $30,000 that we are, that the board is approving and proposing for the warrant article. So the dollar amount that was part of the budget was $5,000. So we're taking that $5,000 out because it's already being covered in the warrant article.
Good, so fire services is being reduced by $12,000, and the equipment body from '27 to '16.
Good, sounds fine. Thank you.
So what's the net for the final, for the budget department?
It's approximately a 23% increase over last year, the majority of that in the salary line.
And just to conclude, or comment, I guess, there's, year after year after year after year, this is the kind of difficulty we have with this budget, where we don't get the detail that we get, that we request and require, and with repeated follow-up, continue to not get it. And I want to say thank you to Nate for having the tenacity to keep working at it, but this shouldn't have to be the, it shouldn't be this much work, and I, I think going forward, the finance committee is probably, I shouldn't speak for the future chair, but it's not going to accept this. If they, if they can't itemize and explain what they're asking for, we're not going to recommend it anymore. Because it's very frustrating and it's...
I think we've got to take some steps next year.
Yeah.
And they're in the budget, Potley, and Potley, it's in the warrant article for a consultant, so.
Yeah.
I think that's going to move us forward, or we'll have to...
And hopefully, the addition of an administrative assistant for the department will...
I think that's going to be a great, I really think that's going to help.
I just hope it's someone with very strong financial skills, because that is, that is where the serious shortcomings are.
I agree with you, and I think you should be part of the process, you're the finance committee on who we look at.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
See you at town meeting.
Yes, see you at town meeting. All right, go back to correspondence.
Okay, we have a letter. Actually, we had an email asking for approval of the, no, that was the visiting nurse, is this something else?
Yeah, that was the visiting nurse.
Okay. This is from Sachek Farm Partners with Massachusetts Farm Bureau Federation to host Camping for a Cure. A press release talking about make plans to attend the Kids Fair and Campout on June 10th to 11th, 2017, at Sachek Farm in Plimpton to help fight the battle against cancer. The event at Sachek Farm, known as Camping for a Cure, will be a fundraiser for Massachusetts Farm Bureau Federation's PAM Mass Challenge Team. Goes on to talk about cyclists, et cetera. Now, we had an issue on the table, didn't we? The issue of how we approached these, not this event per se, but just events in general? Wasn't there a motorcycle event that was?
There was a couple years ago. I think it was a different type of event, and certainly much larger, but I'm still not sure.
It was, that was an event that was being held in a rezag area, but it wasn't a rezag event. This is a commercial operation, obviously, it's been done operating on that particular place, and so it's, the charity would be part of that, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I have no issue with this, I think this is a great idea, I just want to make sure when we do this, that we're, we're being equal with any others.
Yeah. Well, again, he's got his commercial, it's a commercial facility that he set up there, and this is what he's basically using it to raise money for the charity. The motorcycle event was, I mean, it's still subject to the same things, but it was, that was a, that was basically a, it was to raise money for, you know, to raise money for a charity.
It wasn't on a, had a commercial established?
But it's not, it was at somebody's, basically on somebody's property, and it wasn't at an operation.
It wasn't like the club or something like that?
Right, and it wasn't really a commercial, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't a residential, I mean, it wasn't an agricultural pursuit, which would, 48 would allow that, in my opinion. So this, you know, here is, and again, I mean, this is obviously subject to this public safety involved, this Board of Health involved. But in terms of, in terms of the Board of Selectmen, I don't think you have to say yea or nay to it at all.
Okay.
So it's already been passed to Board of Health?
Okay. And they've approved?
I don't know that they've approved yet, it's...
They, they had, well, I got a note from, I got a, I just found out about this today, and I got a note from, from Kathy, and she was worried about a go-ahead from the Selectmen or the Board of Health, but I don't think the Selectmen's go-ahead is really required here.
No, it's not.
But Board of Health, and, and it should be noted, and I'm sure, I mean, he may have already done it, but it should go to public safety, there's a traffic issue for the police and the crowding, and, and probably the fire department in terms of EMS as far as...
So can you just check those people who seem to be...
I mean, I sent a heads up to fire and police.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
But I think he really should get, you know, approval from the police. They're, they're the ones that are going to have to deal with any extra...
Yeah, and they should all be aware of this, right. And parking, and...
I assume, what is it, like 200 people that they're expecting, is that?
It doesn't really specify how many people, it's just, it's actually a campout, June 10th and 11th, so it's an overnight affair.
Well, it's probably just that it's 200 centers.
And, and again, there's Board of Health, it's all Board of Health issues pretty much there, you know, sanitation, if there's food, you know, all of that stuff would be their call on, and...
I think the only troublesome thing, and it actually is the same thing that happened with motorcycles, is that they've already sent out all their advertising and everything without making sure that it's okay with Board of Health and...
Yeah, and that's probably, they shouldn't have done that. Because there may be some issue that comes up, I mean, I have no idea, you know, the Board of Health could have some, I mean, if you're going to have several hundred people, you're going to need a lot of porta-potties down there to take care of that. You've got portable water issues, you've got a lot of different things happening, so...
We're, we're still loosey-goosey around this stuff in this town. You know, it's too much, it's not that we want to deny everybody, but you've got to have people at least think through what the different things that they need to prepare.
Yeah, and make, make sure if you have to go to the Board of Health, you do it before you advertise.
Exactly.
Every time you turn around, somebody comes up with a new revision of the 48 law in Plimpton, is what it is. It all happens under the agricultural law in this town. And it does in any town, it's a right-to-farm town. But we seem to get more of it than, you know, than others, you know, that, just different things, you know, like, this is essentially a rezag area, but this is an agricultural pursuit, you know, you get the corn maze, and you get this, and you get that, and now it's branched out to a charity thing, it's like, I don't know.
It makes to have a policy, so it's pretty clear as to...
Well, I think we need to, you know, a couple of people need to be spoken to, to just say, hey, follow the rules.
But what are the rules?
The rules should, I think in what Dale just said, is go in, that we should have approval by police, fire, Board of Health before they advertise.
But legally, is that required?
But that's not codified anywhere.
Yeah, it's not codified anywhere.
Public safety's always, I mean, yeah, that's a standard going in.
Which is private property?
Oh, yes. If it's a public gathering on private property, certainly, it's, I mean, it's a public gathering for a purpose, there's, there's money changing hands, even though it's a charity, you know, and they're providing for...
So would you do this under a bylaw? Is that the way you would do it?
I mean, I think you could adopt...
Should we throw it to the bylaw review committee and say?
Yeah, but I think you could adopt it as a policy, just as a, you know, as a policy through the, you know, general policy for the town of Plimpton, that...
Yeah, I mean, what if you have a wedding reception at your house?
Well, that was the question that came up with the motorcycle thing, what if it was a, you know, 300 motorcycles at a, at a wedding reception held at somebody's house? Again, it's still all subject to the public safety thing and all of that, generally, a wedding reception doesn't last two days, you know, I mean, so as soon as you go into that overnight thing.
You don't have vendors.
Yeah, but I mean, you have, I mean, it's just like, you know, having 30 people living in a, you know, in a two-bedroom house, I mean...
Can you take a look at a few other towns and see, they must have solved this, I assume, somewhere?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I would love to see if something else has one.
A lot of it's very strict, but they have straight-up regular zoning. I mean, we have rezag, commercial, industrial, but we are also, we're also a right-to-farm community under 48, and that really starts to change things.
But you have, you know, you have your peers in other towns like Challey over in Halifax.
Yeah, what did Halifax do? Because they had somebody that wanted to do a big farm, and he did want to do a concert, and they said that that wasn't allowed.
No, they didn't, didn't they do it?
There was something...
They made a lot of qualifications to it, but I think they ended up doing it.
I don't know, but it would be...
And they had that, they had that big mutter thing that they do, but...
Could be the mutter thing.
Truck they didn't do.
Truck rally or something.
I don't know, one of them, I think that they denied it.
Cather, you know, I don't know if they do something like this. Bridgewater, I know, has right-to-farm, I see the signs every time I drive through.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, you know, I...
So maybe reach out to them and see if they have any official policy.
Typical clarification, right?
I'm not sure. Again, I don't know, but I do know that...
It would be nice to have in the bylaws, though, rather than just a policy.
I think so too, but if we can find out what a few towns, maybe we can just plagiarize it.
Well, we toyed around several years ago about having public gathering bylaw, not prohibiting, but just setting some parameters down for public gathering.
That's not a bad one.
And then you're starting to get into the Constitution again, freedom to assemble, you know, and the only thing that trumps that is public safety. But, but you should, there should be a process if you're going to, but then where do you draw the line? If you're going to have a public gathering of over how many people?
That's why I'd kind of like to see what other towns have done, just to get a sense.
That's a good idea. But that's what these are, they're all gatherings.
Next thing is Plimpton Girl Scouts. They've been maintaining a small community garden on the lawn area between the parking lots in front of the fire department and library, and they would like to continue that, which I think is a great idea.
Great idea.
I think they should give the Board of Selectmen some manuals or something.
I've got plenty of those myself, but, motion to accept this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. This is a note from Columbia Gas Gas of Massachusetts Board of Selectmen. Dear Sirs, we request permission to excavate to make the following main installation with all necessary apertures. Install new gas service at 271 Main Street. Trench has to be, this has been okayed by General Kehe. And he's the one who said, hold on any of these, so...
Yes, so if it's okay by him, it's okay by us, I guess.
I don't know if we have to vote on it.
I think we do have to, because we're ready to let them know that it's been approved.
Okay, so motion to approve this as okayed by General Kehe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. This is a note from Columbia Gas Gas of Massachusetts Board of Selectmen. Dear Sirs, we request permission to excavate to make the following main installation with all necessary apertures. Install new gas service at 271 Main Street. Trench has to be, this has been okayed by General Kehe. And he's the one who said, hold on any of these, so...
Yes, so if it's okay by him, it's okay by us, I guess.
I don't know if we have to vote on it.
I think we do have to, because we're ready to let them know that it's been approved.
Okay, so motion to approve this as okayed by General Kehe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. I'll just sign okay.
Perfect. Columbia Gas now, it's a road cut, install new gas service.
Okay, Plimpton Halifax Express, Friday, April 14th. Is all, let's see, town meeting warrant taking shape, talks about the Plimpton Board of Selectmen and others reviewing the town warrant. Plimpton Open Space Committee to host 2017 Park Season Opening, which, as I said, was very well done. Nice to see a lot of people turn out. Had to postpone if I'm sad because of rain, so we didn't get quite as many. Vernal Pools Explode in Plimpton, a very nice pictorial. They had a, a presentation at the library, and then people did a walk-through, Kato's Ridge, et cetera. Subtle Lake Softball looks towards another strong season, Girls Golf demolishes Falbach. That's pretty good. And Cranberry Equestrians off to the Nationals, some of which are a lot of Plimpton people. That's the news from where we are.
Where all the women are strong, no. Okay, all right, good. Then, we have a meeting next week, the first of May.
Six o'clock?
At six o'clock, unless something rears its ugly head for executive session. Then on May 8th, and then town meeting is on the 17th and possibly the 18th, and town elections are on the 20th. We do have a Public Safety Building Committee meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, basically just to go over what we're going to say at town meeting. And there'll be another public presentation at the library's first Saturday coffee on May 6th. Okay, now we have minutes. March 27. Regular open meeting, I've got a couple misspellings because Dale still spells my name wrong in the first line.
Why that caption like that? I know there's two L's in it.
And just a little typo. And, I don't know if we wanted to put the purpose, we allowed Chief Bussari one hour with Town Council for a personnel issue.
Yes.
Did you have amendments on this?
No, I didn't, I'm sorry.
No, that's all.
So, motion to approve the March 27 minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, April 10th, I think these are Breeze, and again, we've got a typo with Carolyn DiChristofano's last name is misspelled. I didn't have any content issues. Did you submit a letter of retirement?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that was when I had gone downstairs, now that I'm sure that was the right word, so we're good. Any others on April 10th? Okay, motion to accept these as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, April 12th, which are John's. The only question I had was, when we discussed the litigation, was that an open session?
I can't remember.
That was an executive session, so just...
I'll pull it over.
I was wondering on the second page, is it possible, I don't know, it just was, the cost was estimated to cost substantially more than the VOS was led to believe, let's see, maybe...
Let's see, maybe it was more of just a miscommunication or a misunderstanding?
Miscommunication of the cost.
Right, right, not that we were, and someone tried to...
No one tried to fool us.
Fool us.
We just were talking.
How about, it was, how can we say that?
Miscommunication of the cost?
Yeah, that the, right, that the cost...
Cost analysis?
I just want to get rid of was led to believe, more than the BOs was led to believe.
How about just more than anticipated?
More than anticipated, perfect.
Let's take out the whole phrase. Okay, so motion to accept the April 12th minutes as amended, moving that one paragraph back to executive session.
And making this more than anticipated, right?
Yeah, more than anticipated, and it was discussed and voted to delete the article in its entirety.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Anything else?
I did have Eric from, we'll call it Planning Council, putting together a survey for us to send to residents about determining need. I'll email it to you guys, so you can give us an input, what you think. You weren't included on that, were you?
Yes, I did see it.
Were you calling on the survey?
There may have been something.
Okay, all right, well, if you have any comments, I'll make sure you were, and if you weren't, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Better look today.
Are you going back into Breeze's office?
Sure, yep. So there's nothing else for tonight? Right now, I don't know what they'll be next week, so if you have any, anything you want to talk about, just let me know. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Good night, thank you for watching.